Okay. All right, it looks like we're on. Welcome to the Canyon City Planning Commission meeting Wednesday, April 28, 2018. I call this meeting to order. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Before we get started, a couple announcements. I'd like to welcome Councilman John Hammerick, representing City Council, to the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Jerry.
And I'd also like to welcome Brendan Smith, new Commissioner.
Thank you.
All right. Glad you guys are both here. Looks like we have a lot of people here at once. Also, I'd like to ask Mr. Mulready to introduce our guests.
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, I'd like to introduce you to Sandra Mizetti and Caleb Jackson. They are two Capstone project finalists. They are working on their master's program at CU Denver, I believe. And they are the ones who will be presenting later on in this agenda, their findings regarding the Riverfront District formation and the commercial calibration, commercial district calibration that I believe we spoke with Planning Commission about back in February.
All right, thanks, and welcome. Looking forward to the presentations. All right, at this time, I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes from the March 28th.
Should we do roll call, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry. Denise, will you please call roll?
Sure. Good evening. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Scherrato?
Here.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Here.
And City Council Rep. Hammerick?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, now I ask for approval of the minutes from the March 28, 2018 regular meeting. Were there any corrections? None? Okay, I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Clark, second.
Second.
Commissioner Smith. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith? Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Scherrato?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Item number three on our agenda is a public hearing, rezoning 924 and 928 Park Avenue and 921 Prescott Avenue. Currently, R3 high-density residential to R2 medium-density residential. Now open this public hearing. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations, and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Can we please have a staff report?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. This evening, we are here to conduct a public hearing on a request by the owners of the properties at 924 Park Avenue, 928 Park Avenue, and 921 Prescott Avenue to rezone their properties from R3 high-density residential to R2 medium-density residential. There we go. The three subject properties comprise half a city block bounded by Park Avenue on the north, South 10th Street on the east, and Prescott Avenue on the south. The three parcels each contain one single-family residence. These are longstanding single-family residences that appear to have been there for decades. All three parcels are also zoned R3 high-density residential. R3 is a zoned district whose intent, as stated in Section 17.12.090 of the city's municipal code, is quote "primarily for multifamily residential developments of three or more dwelling units per structure, including but not limited to townhomes, condominiums, and apartments." The subject parcels are bordered to the north and south by existing single-family neighborhoods in an R2 zoned district. Another existing single-family neighborhood in an R1A zone borders the subject parcels to the northeast. To the west, the parcels fronting South 9th Street have a C general commercial zoning. The only R3 high-density residential zoning in this area is an existing apartment complex to the northeast. Currently, the three parcels that are the subject of this request have an R3 high-density residential zone, high-density residential zone. The owners of all three parcels seek to change that to R2 medium-density residential, which is effectively a downzoning in land use intensity. Currently, the three parcels that are the subject of this request have an R3 high-density residential zone. The owners of all three parcels seek to change that to R2 medium-density residential, which is effectively a downzoning in land use intensity. Let me catch up with my notes here. Staff finds that the historic use of all three parcels as single-family residential since their annexation into Canyon City and the lack of a clear reason for why an R3 zoning was placed on these properties, that the R3 zone may be in error. Staff also notes that all three property owners have come forward to request a downzoning because they have no desire to redevelop these parcels for multifamily and would like to take advantage of the benefits of single-family residential zoning designation, such as being able to keep backyard chickens. The R2 medium-density residential zone district is the predominant zoning district in this residential area, in this particular corridor, and this rezoning request would continue that pattern. Finally, the city's comprehensive plan recognizes this part of Canyon City as residential, but does not get specific as to actual recommended density. Thus, a zone change to R2 is not going to materially change how the comprehensive plan regards these parcels. As of today, staff has received no phone calls or emails regarding this request, there but no inquiries about what it entails and no opinions offered positively or negatively about the rezoning application. Staff is aware that all three of the applicants own the parcels which comprise the residential half of this block, as they seek a concurrent rezoning of all three parcels to the same zoning designation, and this designation is consistent with the existing surrounding zoning. This is therefore not viewed as spot zoning. Finally, all three lots conform to the minimum lot size for parcels in the R2 zoned district, and all three appear to meet setback requirements as well. With that, staff does recommend that Planning Commission cite the findings of fact as a certification of Canyon City's jurisdiction to act on the zone change request. And staff also recommends that Planning Commission recommend that City Council approve the draft ordinance to rezone 924 Park Avenue, 928 Park Avenue, and 921 Prescott Avenue to R2 medium-density residential. That would conclude the staff presentation. As always, I'm happy to answer any questions that Planning Commission may have. We also have the applicant, Collette Lee, one of the applicants, Collette Lee, here to speak on this. Oh, we have two applicants. Oh, okay, good. So they are here to answer any questions that you may have of them as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I guess I have one. Other than the benefits to having backyard chickens, would there be any changes as far as property taxes, or is there any other benefit to it? Does it increase? Does it lower property taxes? Is this something that we're looking at as well, or?
I don't know that the assessor's office, when they assign property values, is looking at the improvements that have been made over time historically, and have been -- part of their research is building permits that have been permitted. Obviously, if we're talking a multifamily development that's taken place, there are a lot more units on the property, and there have been a lot more extensive building permits that have been issued. So I don't know for a fact that a downzoning like this would have any change in the rate of taxation, because it doesn't represent a particular change in the way the property has historically been used.
And there's been no problems with obtaining any kind of building permit at all, or any other issues?
Not that we are aware of, no.
Okay.
Can I elaborate on that?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not just backyard chickens.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Collette Lee, 928 Park.
I just use that as an example, because it's in the packet, so.
But think about it, you know, we had a chicken coop that's been built in the '50s. Now you're saying we can't use that, we can't use our property the way we want to use it.
Right.
So that's, you know, it's not just backyard chickens.
Collette?
It's other things, too.
Could you use the microphone?
Sorry, yes, thanks.
Did you hear me? Yeah, looks like it's on.
It's on.
Okay. But, you know, you're designating, you know, if it's R3, we can't do a lot of stuff that the property was designed for to begin with.
Right, right.
Yeah. That makes sense?
Yes, ma'am.
So if someone says you can't do something on your property because you're R3, and that's where this all come about, you know? Because we had chickens before, we got rid of them, because my husband had some issues, you know, heart issues and that, and then we got them back, and then we got a code violation, and it says you can't have it because you're R3, and I'm saying, what's R3? And I didn't know the difference.
Right, understand that. And there's no other, not saying that the backyard chickens is the only one, but there's no other benefit? I mean, there's no water rights or anything there, right?
Water rights for the chickens, the hitchhiker's rights.
Okay. Okay.
Before I ask the audience, are there any questions of staff from any of the commissioners?
The residents, how long have they lived there? I mean, are most of them been there for quite a while, or?
We're second owners.
Well, we'll just move on to comments from the audience, and so come on up.
We're the second owners. So the property was built in '37. We had one owner up until 2000, and then we had the property from 2000 until present. So just two owners for us.
Was it the chickens? Is that, was the main? That was the main thing to bring all this?
Well, that's, yeah, because they're saying, you know, the city's saying that I have to do, because of the zoning, I have to abide by the zoning of R3, which doesn't allow.
All right.
Yeah.
Right.
My wife and I, we own 924 Park Avenue.
What was your name, sir?
Pardon me, did you hear me?
What's your name, sir?
My name is Michael Kossner, K-O-S-S-N-A-R.
Thank you.
And we've owned that property for, since '95, I guess. Okay, the thing about that property, it's an historic property, and it shouldn't have any possibility of multifamily living on there. That property originally was a homestead by Colonel Prescott from the Civil War, and we have a copy of the Homestead Act signed by Ulysses S. Grant, that, you know, Colonel Prescott, that street behind us, Prescott Avenue, it was named after Colonel Prescott. The house that in question, the one we're talking about, the house itself was built in 1871. So it's a really old, established property, and we wouldn't want to see someone come in there, a builder or someone come in and try to buy the front part of the property and build a fourplex or something there. That would be a shame.
Okay, thank you. Before you sit down, are there any other questions of the applicants from the commission?
Yeah. I have one question. I guess the downzoning from R3 to R2 potentially comes with a financial ramification for you. Are you aware of that ramification? You're willing to accept that?
What are the financial?
What's that?
What are the ramifications?
Well, you, you know, if and when it comes time to sell, you now have an R2 lot that can only be developed, you know, up to a duplex unit. Currently, under R3, you could sell that lot to somebody who would want to put in a multifamily unit. Presumably, the market rate for that property is more if you can put multi-unit structure on that property. So is, I guess, are you aware of and are you willing to take that financial risk?
As far as me, I don't see me selling, you know, I'll probably live there until I die.
Right. Your heirs, you, I mean, at some point, at some point, that property is likely to change hands. Are you aware of and willing to accept the financial ramifications of downzoning to R2?
I think if it's an R2 and we sell it as an R2, that's where it'll be at, and I don't see him leveling his house down.
No, no. In fact, our oldest daughter is living in it now, and she doesn't ever plan on leaving that. She's fallen in love with it, so, anyway.
Ours was built in '37, and it's a, the way those houses were at the time is they were self-sufficient, so, you know, not that they had chickens, but, you know, we have an upper and a lower garden tiers, and they used to, like, raise tomatoes or something like that, and that's how they bartered. They were self-sufficient as far as taking care of themselves way back when. So I don't see us leveling the house down.
All right. So you're willing to accept the financial ramifications of downzoning?
If we sell now, the real estate's up now, anyway.
Right, but presumably it would be worth more now as R3 versus R2.
Yeah, I'm willing to take that.
Okay.
We have no intentions of selling, and children have no intentions of selling. So, and like I said, it's an historic property and, and.
His is, yeah.
So, you know.
Actually, Prescott's daughter was the one that he built the house.
Yeah, that's a Prescott addition is actually what it is. And he had the house on 9th Avenue, which is right in line. Supposedly, at one time, there was a tunnel going between the two houses, but I've never found it.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Big.
Any additional questions of staff or the applicants from the commission?
Just quick clarification, if we could, for the rest of the commission. The staff report talks about the R3 and the grandfathering issue. Under R3, the single-family dwelling is a use, a permitted use, used by right, so that, I guess, can you quickly clarify that issue?
That is true. The R3 does allow for single-family residential use. Clearly, that's not the intent of the zoned district, but it does allow that as a permitted use.
I guess the thought is, on some level, is to correct the zoning map, although the R3 is, you know, it's the intention or the future ability of those property owners to develop to an R3 density. It's not, you know, the existing use is a single-family structure, that's fine. There's nothing technically incorrect with the current zoning, I mean, the use as a use by right. You know, is there anything to be said for that?
When we left in 2000, I actually moved out east, and my daughter rented the house. At that time, we assumed that it was residential R2. When it got changed to R3, I have no clue. We got one letter that was telling us about commercial residential. I think I argued a little bit with this, not so much you, but the code enforcer, about it, we thought it was a commercial residential at one time, or, but I think that that was the 9th Street. We don't know when it got changed from a residential, because we bought it as a residential in 2000. So when it got changed, I have no clue. We never got any letters or anything like that. And I believe Mr. Mulready was looking into it, and he couldn't find when it got changed either.
And that's from the '59 annexation of South Canyon?
I think it dates back to the actual annexation of South Canyon in 1959.
And when did this become an issue?
Just this year.
Just this year?
Yeah.
So you brought back chickens?
Well, we had chickens.
Had chickens.
We had chickens all along, and then the code enforcer got after it.
It just didn't get noticed until very recently that they were keeping chickens.
So enforcement?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right.
Further question for staff? I guess the alternative is to address the backyard chicken ordinance that unfortunately doesn't deal with R3. This is a, yes, it's R3 zoned, but it's developed and currently used on a density equal to R1. You know, but that's, for whatever reason, the backyard chicken doesn't deal with R3. Is there a reason we're not addressing the backyard chicken ordinance versus this zone change?
Well, when the application came in, the ordinance that you saw last month, that we brought before Planning Commission last month, had not been finalized and was not ready to go forward. So there wasn't a procedure at that point in place to allow for chickens in an R3, backyard chickens in an R3. Since Planning Commission has reviewed it, one of the changes that we have made going forward to take that particular ordinance to council is that in R3, the keeping of backyard chickens would be considered a special use, special review use. That way, we could deal with this on a case-by-case basis. Nevertheless, we have an applicant, when I explained this to them, they were adamant that they still wanted to go forward to change the zoning on the property, because in their minds, they want to forever foreclose upon the possibility of having these properties redeveloped for multifamily.
Commissioner Ledoux, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think that's, that's fine.
Okay. All right. No other questions of staff or the applicants. I'll close this public hearing. Any further discussion? Any? Just in case. Okay. Now call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings of fact. Section seven in our packet down below.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Harmon?
I move the Planning Commission cite the following findings of fact in the public record. The requested rezoning was based on property, based on a property filed application signed by the respective property owners, 928 Park Avenue, 924 Park Avenue, 921 Prescott Avenue, to seek an R2 medium-density residential zoning. Adequate public notice, as required by the Canyon City Municipal Code, has been provided, and Planning Commission has conducted a public hearing on the proposed rezoning request, providing adequate opportunity to concerned citizens to speak in favor or against the proposed revision.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Scherrato?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Okay. Looks like now we need a motion on a recommendation to council. Can I call for a motion and a second? A recommendation to City Council, please.
I will make that motion as well. I move that the City of Canyon City Planning Commission recommend that the City Council for the City of Canyon City approve the ordinance to rezone 924 Park Avenue, 928 Park Avenue, and 921 Prescott Avenue in the City of Canyon City, Colorado, to R2 medium-density residential.
Thank you. Do we have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Smith? Denise, please call roll.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Randy Smith?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Scherrato?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Brandon Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Okay, motion's passed. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. Have a good evening. Item number four on our agenda or discussion items, Sandra Mizetti and Caleb Jackson were introduced earlier, and we have a presentation, and it looks like Deena is up there to kick it off.
I am. Good evening, commissioners. So just a little bit of background and reminder of where we are in the process. So we introduced these issues to Planning Commission, as Patrick mentioned earlier, at the February 28 meeting in the packet, and video of that meeting is now online on the city's website. And then just last week, we introduced these two projects to the mayor and city council on April 18. And that packet and video of that meeting is also online at this time, and for the public that's perhaps watching now or in the future, a link to that information is canyonsity.org. Click on the Government tab on the top of the webpage, go to Meetings, Agendas, Packets, and Archived Videos tab on the left of the page, and then go to the meeting that you're looking for, so you can find the background videos and tapes from those meetings at that location. So the, this work, again, to remind everybody, is basically implementation steps from two adopted plans that the city has. First, the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan that was adopted by council in December of 2017, and then the commercial work is an implementation step from the US-50 corridor plan that was adopted by council in 2015. So I think as we had previously talked about, that it's really important for us to update our codes and ordinances to be relevant, to be clear to either current property owners or future property owners, and that's some of the reason that we're doing this work. Part of the reason that we're doing the riverfront work is because we don't have any current riverfront zone district language, and Sandy will go into that a little bit further. So we're lucky, as Patrick had mentioned earlier, we're lucky to have two University of Colorado Denver Capstone students working on each of these projects for us, and they are here this evening to give you a presentation on where they are in terms of their analysis and some of their initial findings. So with that, we will start out with Sandy. We're typically, in presenting these in order, we're starting out with the riverfront zone district creation work, and then we'll move to Caleb's presentation, which is the commercial zone district calibration work. And I guess the question is, for the commissioners, each presentation is about or no longer, hopefully, than 20 minutes. Would you like to ask questions at the end of each presentation, or perhaps here both, and we can just let folks know?
I would suggest we ask, write our questions down and ask them at the end of each presentation.
At the end of each presentation.
Time permitting, yeah.
So with that, I'll hand it over to Sandy.
Good evening. First, before I start, you should have a new packet of my presentation. I have made a change in it, and the first, the first change is I have taken the case study for Glendale completely out, feeling that it was probably less appropriate for your development vision plans here, and inserted the case study from Durango, Colorado. That's the first thing. And the other clarification I have in mind is there is some question with the language I use for the floodplains. The 1% chance is the same as the 100-year floodplain, and the 0.2% is the 500-year flooding. So those should be clarified in the updated copy. So as Deena said, this is in response to the vision for Canyon City of developing the riverfront properties. The city is committed to the progressive growth and economic development, which will utilize and enhance the great city asset of the Arkansas River Corridor Plan. The, one of the near-term implementations is to create the riverfront zone district, which is going to include two new zones. Sorry. Two new zones, and that is the riverfront mixed-use development zone and the riverfront residential zone also. This, implementing these two new, or developing these two new zone districts facilitates the incorporation of vibrant mixes of uses along the riverfront and supports the 20-year vision for the specific land use recommendations outlined in the strategic plan. So goals for our Capstone project is to develop this, for my Capstone project, is to develop this new zone district zoning code language and recommendations. So the objective of these two new zone districts is to provide clarity and predictability for developers from the regulatory standpoint. It will include appropriate, clear, and easy understandable language, and will be accompanied by graphical information that illustrates the intent of the code language. So my message. So my methodology for, I guess I'm not doing my PowerPoint here, I apologize. What happened? Did I hit the off? Sorry, technical difficulties.
There you go.
So I'm already past all of this. Okay, so my background research included research on form-based codes and the desire, I believe, for Canyon City is to develop a form-based code hybrid, which includes typical conventional type of zoning mixed with the form-based. And what form-based is, it allows different uses to coexist and benefit from each other from the close proximity to each other. And typically, the language in a form-based code is easier to understand and provides illustrations, diagrams, and matrices. I also did research on some of the, you know, figuring this out on zoning code best practices, riverfront development, and why it's important for economic development and creating a vibrant riverfront. And the relevant plans that I use, relevant plans are used to express, you know, they express the visions of the towns and the citizens for the development of the New River Walk. And the plans I used that I would refer to for Canyon City are the 2017 and the 2020 Strategic Plan, and the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, as Deena said, which was just approved in December, and the Eastern Fremont County Trails Open Space and River Corridor River Improvements Detail Plan. So those are the three plans that I've used to study. My approach also includes case study analysis. Here's case study analysis, and they look at the strategies implemented and the tools used for riverfront development for what other cities and towns have used relative in size to Canyon City. Then I also looked at what are your existing conditions now currently along that riverfront corridor, and this documents the physical conditions that exist as a result of the code. And then I formulated, I did my data analysis and formulated my findings from that, and analyzed the objectives of the case studies and the strategies and tools used. And then I'm in the process of developing, continuing to develop the recommendations for code language and illustrations. So currently, the existing conditions along the river corridor. First, the vision for the city is to provide connections to the river from other areas of town to the river, bring people down there, protect the river and the adjacent natural areas, and develop, enhance, and extend the Arkansas River Walk Trail System. As it exists today, the Arkansas River Corridor is primarily comprised of industrial uses, which is compliant with the zoning. There's some small amount of commercial zones mixed in this area. And along the riverbanks in this area, as far as visual corridor through there, you have a lot of riprap. As you can see in the bottom slide there, a lot of concrete masonry along the banks used to stabilize the banks, and a lot of industrial uses that back up to the river. The front of the property is opposite the river, and a lot of storage areas face the river. So as you're going on the trail and going down the river, you get the back of properties. And sometimes, along the fence lines, those areas aren't maintained, so you get a lot of weedy vegetation that has grown up. Also, some of the existing conditions as far as the code goes, it's very minimal, it's very vague, hard to understand. There, as Deena mentioned, there is not a specific zoning district for the riverfront property. And as I already mentioned, it's a lot of industrial. Did I skip one? Okay. Also, along the river, there's a lot of areas that, according identified in the Eastern Fremont County Trails Open Space River Corridor Plan Improvement Detail Plan, it also talks about the river being channelized, which is part of that is due to just the fact that it's an urban area and runoff from parking lots and drainages drains right into the river, creating greater flows in the river, which causes the channelization. And channelization can lead to decreased water quality, less habitat in the river and along the river riparian areas, and increased flooding. As I mentioned before with the flooding, I clarified the 100-year and the 500-year floodplain. On this map right here, the striped area is the actual floodway, and the blue is the 100-year floodplain, and the brown is the 500-year floodplain. So much, and outlined in black is the new proposed riverfront mixed-use areas and riverfront residential zones. And as you can see by the map, a good portion of the project or the new riverfront zone district is within the floodplain, either the 100-year or the 500-year, and actually some pieces are in the floodway. Okay, so. So my case studies, the first one is Astoria, Oregon, which is located in the northwest corner along the Columbia River. So the city, the focus of the city's plan was to ensure development balanced with the preservation of the city's history, quality of life, in addition to creating a vibrant waterfront. Astoria's code develops the riverfront area as an overlay district. They have three overlay districts. One is the Bridge Vista Overlay Zone, the Civic Greenway Overlay Zone, and the Neighborhood Greenway Zones. And each one of these zones has specific requirements for them, and some of the requirements in these zones address permitted and non-permitted uses, bulk mass as far as building height maximums, lot coverage, and standards for on-land development. In their case, they also have overwater development, which does not apply to you guys. Residential standards are more representative of design guidelines as applied to the exterior wall treatments and materials allowed, but those are incorporated into their overlay zone district requirements. They're not, it's not a separate document. And then Durango, Colorado, the land use code, it doesn't contain a specific river corridor district. However, it does, like Astoria, have the overlay, establishes the river corridor overlay zone. And this zone outlines the incentives and controls for development and redevelopment in an effort to strengthen the river corridor as a community asset and implement goals of the Animus River Plan. It consists of two overlay districts. One is the downtown sub-district, which addresses the urban character, and the river corridor sub-district addresses less intensive development in those areas. And the standards for the river corridor overlay zone follow the following principles. They address community character, economic development, compact development, and multimodal transportation, ecology, and flexibility and performance requirements. And then Silverthorn. Silverthorn is located in Somme County. The code language for the district is more of a statement, is very, very brief, and it speaks mostly to the concepts of the desired intent of the character and pedestrian setting, and refers back to design guidelines. They actually have a separate document that you have to refer back to. And that document is the Blueprint Silverthorn Design Guidelines or Design Standards and Guidelines for the riverfront district, and they were developed as a guide for general form and design of buildings within the district. And their document is highly illustrated. It consists of many diagrams and sketches to illustrate the desired character along with the language that's included. So the case study findings that I would like to report is they, all three, express the need in development and need to redevelopment and enhance the riverfront areas to improve economic vitality and create cohesive character. Comment to all three studies was the vision to provide connections to the river from other areas of the city, protect the river and adjacent natural areas, and develop, enhance, and extend the river trail system. So my draft recommendations include implementing or developing a form-based code, the hybrid form of it, which is going to include develop code language by creating specific standards to meet the intent of the 2017 and 2020 Strategic Plan, the Arkansas River Corridor Plan, and the Eastern Fremont County Trails Open Space and River Corridor River Improvements Detail Plan, which is, and the desires of the citizens. It also is to include illustrations to visualize the intent of the code. And for the riverfront zone district mixed-use and riverfront residential, I have a combined section that is general recommendations for both zones, and those include proposed site designs and standards which apply to both zoning districts, proposed development strategies to protect life and property of the community and create resiliency from flood events along the Arkansas River Corridor, proposed standards with which ensure connections to existing trails and create connections to the downtown core, encourage an attractive riverfront design for an improved community image, standards that require landscaping within parking lots and on the perimeter of sites, and proposed development standards that screen unsightly utility and service areas. And specific recommendations for the riverfront mixed-use areas will be to allow a range of uses to include retail, commercial, and residential. Proposed site designs, which will apply, some of these apply to both also, but for this section, is going to apply to clustered development uses, so moving things together, so it allows for more flexibility on the site. Proposed minimum density requirements for the residential section within the mixed-use section, which does allow for residential also. Proposed minimum lot frontage, maximum lot frontage and front side setbacks. And what I'm also looking at is how setbacks from the river to the front of, say, a cafe, and how, what that's going to look like as far as the cafe with a patio, how does that, does that encroach into like a corridor easement? So I'm still working on that section. Develop standards for architectural building character, building form, massing, maximum heights, and specific architectural elements that address how the building is viewed. You know, windows on the front, have entrances on both the riverside and the streetside. And then develop standards for open space, which include maximum open space or minimum open space requirements, size and scale of open space, open space that provides pedestrian features that include benches, stuff like that, and preservation of mature trees. Develop standards for required landscaping. And then for the riverfront residential zone, it's to, the recommendations for that zone is to allow a range of high-density housing types and styles such as condos, townhomes, maybe some cottage homes. Proposed site design standards which apply to the residential to also include clustering, and proposed minimum density requirements for residential development in just the residential Proposed minimum lot frontages, maximum lot coverages, front and side setbacks, and river setbacks. The development standards for architectural building character is building form and massing and maximum heights, which the height for the residential section will be different than the mixed-use section. And it would be similar. Open space requirements include the maximum or minimum open space requirements, size and scale of open space that's required, specifically planned open space. Don't just count your open space as what's left over. Okay? And open space for pedestrian features such as outdoor patios and, you know, plaza areas for residents, and preservations of mature trees. And I'm doing a little bit more research right now on the floodplain and floodway development, what's actually allowed in those areas, especially the floodway.
Well, thank you. That was very good. So I have a question, but I'll open it up to everyone else to ask some questions of you, Sandra, if that's okay. Commissioner Smith?
So with the current riverfront properties, would the riverfront zones require current property owners of private property to bring their zone up to compliance?
I believe, Deena might be able to answer that further, but I believe the properties that are currently in use would be grandfathered in until they decide to develop or sell or something like that.
Right. That would be the case on any property where the map is actually updated. In the presentation to council last week, I talked about the fact that the riverfront zone district work right now anyway, unless council changes their mind, the goal is to actually create the language for the districts, for these new districts that don't currently exist but not go through a mapping process, right? So there's two components to zoning. There's the language in the municipal code that says, you know, how many units, what the density is, how much open space, and then there's the zoning map that you have in front of you that shows where that language applies. For the riverfront work, we're only planning on creating the language, creating the districts, and leaving it open to an existing or future property owner to come in and ask for a rezoning to apply that zone district to the property.
Thank you.
I've got lots of questions.
Oh, no.
I don't know how far in depth we're going to get here. I don't know how much of a future, as far as what we're going to do. The three examples that you used, were they successful? Were they plans that are still in effect, or have they accomplished what they need to do?
As far as I know right now, that they're already done and implemented and working really good.
Okay, so that was the first one, I guess. What was...
Like Silverthorn, I can use that for example, because I've been there numerous times.
I haven't been to those places.
Silverthorn is absolutely gorgeous.
Mm-hmm. It's beautiful.
I mean, it is, they did an amazing job. And I've only been in Colorado since 94, but I ski a lot up at Keystone. And I started skiing down there back in the early 80s, and the difference is night and day. I mean, they really made it attractive enough to, I mean, people literally come down there. They have the outlet stores and stuff like that there. It is absolutely gorgeous.
So with all these plans, these three that were obviously successful, what was the biggest conflict, I guess? What was the most predominant piece that, I guess, gave everybody problems? I mean, have you talked to the residents here? Obviously, you've walked the River Walk, I guess, so...
I've walked the River Walk here, but I haven't talked to any of the residents here. As far as the other ones, it's just what I've been able to find in the documents that I've read. I've read online. Astoria is pretty far, Durango's pretty far. I've been to Durango many times. And I haven't, but I wasn't doing this project at the time, so I didn't talk to people down there. But it's really nice and you, you know, it's on the Anamis River, it's very large. And like you said, with Silverthorne, it's very, it's very successful. As far as problems, no problems that I saw were actually mentioned in the documents. So they held a very extensive public engagement process for all three of these, which included workshops, open forums, and, you know, surveys, and what the public envisioned, and they implemented and worked with the community to develop these plans. So I think by doing that, they alleviated a lot of the issues that would normally occur without doing something like that.
It'd be great to do all this. One of the things is, do you have a cost comparison with the three? Obviously, Silverthorne is a high-dollar area, and I think Durango is populated with a lot of tourism as well.
And I think Astoria is too. As far as, I do not have a cost comparison. However, all three of the cities are, that I, in my case study, are comparable to size of Canyon City.
Okay, so per capita.
So I looked, I looked at population and size for comparison. I didn't go to like San Antonio or Chicago or any of those riverwalks, which are just, or even Fort Collins for that, because I ruled that, you know, that's not your intent, and that's not a comparable size comparison to your community.
And you were saying you've been there since 95 or so. What was the timeframe of these, from start to, start to finish, I guess? What was their timeframe as far as getting something like this, as massive as this, accomplished?
The Silverthorne one was developed, developed in a relatively quicker timeframe than the other ones. I think the Astoria one was a much longer process. I'm trying to remember. I didn't, didn't prepare for that question, but I think most of these plans were updated in 2000, in the, early to mid 2000s, and implemented soon after. So, ten years, maybe, I'm guessing.
I'll go ahead and stop for now. I've got something for Caleb, too.
So one of the things, I think, maybe what you're getting at is the economic impact.
Right.
Could be interesting to see what that before and after picture, it'd be interesting to see what the.
And I know, and if I remember it, I think Silverthorne.
That's not on their website, though. I did look.
I think Silverthorne had a lot more than that.
Yeah.
Undeveloped space than we do, unfortunately.
And you did mention that Canyon City is the third oldest city, so we do have a lot of residents who've been here a long time. Also, we have the railroad right there, so I was worrying versus, commercial versus industry.
And I think Astoria is a lot like that because they have a working waterfront that was established, I think, in like, initially like in the late 1800s and then incorporated in the early 1900s. So they have a long history, and that's one of the things that, why they went forward with their plan, because they didn't want all of that character lost with new development.
Right. It looks, it's a good plan, so, anyway.
I think it calls for a field trip, but I think that's out of our budget.
I agree. I've got.
I'm going to nominate someone to do follow-up research.
I don't have any questions right now.
I tried, you know, I tried to look for some newspaper articles that talked about the success for all of these projects, and that's really hard to find, too. I mean, they talk about the development, but they don't follow through like five years later or two years later how successful it's been.
I do have one thing, sorry. So going back to Silverthorne, too, one thing that kind of spilled over to other cities, I mean, Dillon cleaned up a lot, too. I mean, there's Silverthorne, Dillon, and then you've got Keystone Mountain and stuff. I mean, that whole area really just, Dillon, too, Dillon was amazing.
Even Breckenridge. Breckenridge has redeveloped their riverfront area. They don't have it in their code, but I've been going to Breckenridge since I was 10 years old, and it's dramatically changed, and they've changed that whole riverfront area. And it's, in the summertime, it's huge. They have concerts out there along the river and all kinds of things. Fourth of July bash out there.
Yeah, and I think it's something that, for lack of a better term, spill over, but affect, you know, up at Eight Mile and, you know, Florence and, I mean, there's, since I moved into this, moved to Canyon, it kind of blows my mind about how many little towns there are just in this area here. And, yeah, hopefully with, that the same effect happens that happened at Silverthorne.
Small changes can make, can take great effect, make huge effects.
Got a couple of questions.
Well, I have them.
I'll go down the line.
You do, too?
I do.
You didn't speak up soon enough there, sir.
He hadn't stopped.
We're going to go in order.
Mike was still going.
No hand raising.
Well, I just have one observation, personal observation. I've been to Astoria, and they started their riverfront restoration project back in 78. So it's been going on a long time. They really kicked it into gear in about 84.
Okay.
But it is nice. One of the comments that I, or questions I had about that, the over-the-river development, if I heard you correctly, wasn't something we were going to consider at this?
I don't think you're just considering that here. That's not one of my recommendations to develop over the river, over the river.
Right.
It's to be set back, but still embrace the river.
Well, I guess the biggest reason I asked that question is we have two accesses over the river, two thoroughways, and I've seen a lot of different places develop from that aspect of it, especially with the fact that we have the train.
Well, Silverthorne has one of, where they develop one of their walkways and bridges over the river. In that regard, yes.
We have, we actually have two road thoroughways over. And like I said, one of them, the main one is right actually by the.
You have First Street and Fourth Street.
Fourth Street, correct. Okay. The other question I had was on page 18 of your presentation, you talked about the black checkered or dotted sections.
The floodway?
Yeah, there was a floodplain chart there.
Oh, the floodplain? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you want to just go to that slide?
The big, the largest, there you go. The little triangular section area right there, if I heard you correctly, was already planned for some type of development?
That's the, that's, as far as what it has outlined in the Arkansas River Master Corridor Plan, they have these districts already outlined, and that is the, one of the riverfront residential zones.
From a land use standpoint?
Yeah, land use. The, one of the, their suggestions for.
So the.
I guess.
So the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan is basically an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. So by virtue of doing the corridor plan and adopting the corridor plan, that's the appropriate time to do amendments to land use, right, versus zoning. And land use is the first, is sort of the base palette that you start with, and the land use category is a broad category of generally what you want to see in the area. And then zoning is the next step that comes in and is much more prescriptive and detailed. So by virtue of completion and adoption of the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, the land use was amended along the riverfront in the outlined sections from the previous land use.
Well, just from looking at this map, if I'm reading it correctly, isn't that?
It looks like the triangle is shifted on the graphic.
Well, doesn't it look a long way from the river?
It's, the intent is, so, one, I just noticed that it appears the triangle has shifted a bit on the graphic, but to the east. The intent is to, Sandy talked a little bit about having minimum densities, perhaps in terms of the residential, the riverfront residential. The intent is to get more people living within walking distance of the river to be able to have access to the river and provide more liveliness along the river and proximity to the river. So it's not that that residential needs to be right on the river's edge, and we know in some cases that's just not feasible. So we looked for pockets of where additional residential might be able to come in within walking distance of that core river area in the community, which is really envisioned to be between First and Ninth. So that's what that triangle represents.
All right, well, that makes sense. I just didn't understand why that looked like it was so far away from something we were talking about having a plan for, and, yeah, you'd have to do some walking to get there.
It's about a five-minute walk.
It's a good hike.
I think, if I can add on to that, I think, I think you're right, Deana. I think it's, if you look at the buildings there, that triangular place was behind to the left.
It was to the west.
It was closer, much closer to the river.
I'll point it out.
I'm pretty sure.
Let's see.
And it kind of made more sense on the, on the original plan.
It's actually right here, more in this area. I apologize for fixing that.
Yeah, behind the businesses on Eighth Street.
It's, it's, there's an open field here, and it's at the part, on the south part of that open field. It's not where those buildings are. I apologize for not fixing that.
So it does appear closer on the original plan than this, than this one.
Okay. Like I said, it was a little bit of a hike to live near the river and have to get to it from there, but anyway, I am.
I've been out there. It's not really that far.
No, no, go ahead.
All right, this kind of gets back to the economic, not necessarily economic impact, but our economic viability right now. One of the reputations that Canyon City has is, one, being very difficult to work with, and the other is, is it's hard for Canyon City to attract businesses because of the, I guess you could say, perceived lack of return on investment. So how do you create the code to make it seem, and if we're adding more, to some extent, we're being more detailed, more specific, how do you make the code appear friendlier so that developers are willing to work with the city, the city doesn't be considered hard to work with? And how do you make it look less costly to develop? Because you're throwing in open space requirements, you're throwing in parking lot requirements, and all of that. I love it all. I mean, the community I come from has all of that. But how do you change the mindset of developers coming into Canyon City to accept it?
I think by creating actually more idea of your vision on what you want.
So the visual side of things?
Yes. It, I think in implementing that vision into the code language will make it more clear to developers exactly what your intent is, and there's no second guessing to where, well, I think this is what they want, but maybe not. I've worked with cities like that before with planning where, and you have to go back three, four times to get through it because the code is very, very minimal or very vague. And so it's a guessing game. And this way, it's more concise, it's clear of what exactly your intent is, and I think it will streamline the process, which may be more attractive and easier to work with the city on.
And on the visualization end of things, how is that created? Who creates that?
You mean the documents in here, the drawing?
The documents, the visuals, the samples, so to speak, examples of?
So we're, we're looking at creating like a cross-section of what the language is saying. So you have it written, but you also have visually what it looks like, which some people are visual people, and it's hard to understand when it's just written. Well, when you have both there, it makes it more easier to understand.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, and I agree. I'm just wondering from a, from a budget perspective, city council member over there.
Well, I'm doing, I'm doing some of them for free.
You're doing some of them for free.
So economically, it's beneficial for you.
But it, but does it, does it result in additional staffing? I guess is where I'm going with that. That's, that's going to be a question for somebody else to answer, obviously, but something to consider.
It's definitely a concern, and especially since, you know, council has asked that we work on and complete the riverfront zone district work first, and then tag-team, and then move on to the commercial work after the riverfront is done. At the council meeting last week, I clearly identified that we, you know, if the direction was to move forward with the commercial work, we would need to consider that in terms of the 2019 budgeting cycle, from public meeting noticing, how many public meetings are we going to have? But also potentially, you know, specifically to create some of these graphics, our department is rather lean, so.
Everything, yeah.
And we interviewed with some of the high school students last week, so we may have a.
That's a really good idea.
You know, intern, you know, anything that we could get to assist, but it's going to be a challenge. We'll have to work through that.
All right, cool. I like it a lot. I really do. I like the idea.
I think, if I could, I think, Rick, one of the ways that you increase property values, you know, they always say if you're buying a house, don't buy the best house on the lot and the block, right? Well, one of the ways that you can increase property values is by having the natural resource available, okay? That, because there's no, there's no replacing that or getting around having that there. But through zoning essentially, and this is, this is my belief, what you do is you pick out, you pick off the bad houses. So you raise property values by getting rid of the shanties and having land use planning, zoning, that requires replacement to be at a higher standard. And so it's, there's some chicken and the egg there, but, but that's, I believe, that's kind of how it works.
I agree. Is it our turn yet? Do a second lap?
Commissioner Liddo, you're up. You're on the clock.
I do have a few very minor items. Under the developed standards for open space and connection, I think you caught it reading through, include maximum and minimum open space requirements? I think the minimum would be.
I think I have maximum there. It's supposed to be minimum.
Okay, okay. And then the open space pedestrian features, could we also incorporate bicycle features in addition, you know, for that, for those connections? If we could also have bicycle language features?
Okay.
And then develop standards for landscaping. Can we also develop standards for lighting? This, this town has unfortunate lighting, to say the least, so if we could include that in the riverfront zone district, is maybe a way to make it easy, maybe a model for the rest of, the rest of the zone. But lighting is, especially in a river, is important. And then for a day job, ideal in floodplains, I'd have a few minor edits that I'll share with you later.
Good.
Your professor is here.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Council member Hammerick.
Thank you. Sandy, thank you for this. This is very interesting, and it looks like a lot of work has gone into it. I also have some edits for you. I'll share them with you afterwards. It's just language-type stuff. Would you believe that there is controversy in what you've written?
No. I mean, yes, yes, I believe, because I think in every project, there's controversy.
Okay. And, and having been part of the river corridor, at least involved in the discussion, and seeing how that is going to work, if you look on page seven, at the bottom, it says, "Riverfront residential zoning is proposed south of the river." And I think that you need to wordsmith that because that is a landmine in this community because what you're talking about is rezoning agricultural land that's currently in private hands. And that's, that's a real sore subject for some of our citizens.
So maybe I should just say the specific site where it's.
Again, remember that we're only creating the language, we're not mapping.
And I understand that, and I appreciate that you said that.
That's what happened last time.
But this statement does not reflect that yet. And so I'm suggesting some edits on that statement to, to get more of the flavor of what you've been saying, Deana, in there.
Okay, good.
And that's all I've got.
All right. Do we have an additional question on this end?
Oh, just one, mostly for Deana. Sorry about that. Still kind of new to all this riverfront property and all that. Between First and Ninth Street, who actually owns the river? Who, is it just the city?
D O W.
It depends. If you look at, I mean, you can go on the county assessor's website, bring up the property line information. line information, you can see, I think you can. I'm used to doing it through our city portal, but it changes and it varies. So, sometimes property lines actually go to the center line of the river, and sometimes the property lines go to, say, kind of top of bank. And so, then there's a separate ownership in, within the river itself. So, it varies.
That's kind of my question is, from First to Ninth, who would be in charge of getting rid of your riprap? And who would be, where's the money going to come from as far as cleanup? Is that going to be the individual property owners? Or is this kind of a, the river corridor plan in itself that we're going to clean up like Councilman Hammerick said? You've got to get rid of some of the junk before people start coming in.
Right.
So, if I see that rip right there, I'm not going to want to build next to it. So, I think we have to clean up the river before people are going to come in and go, "Yeah, this is a great investment."
Right. So, the great news is about, within the last month, we found out that we received GO-Code grant funding for implementation of the first segment of the in-river improvements and cleanup, and so that will occur from First to Fourth Streets. And it's going through final design right now. And as far as I understand, that implementation is supposed to begin fourth quarter of this year.
Good. Thank you.
And I believe that does include bank improvements.
Correct.
Go ahead.
One quick clarification on Mr. Hammerick's. The agricultural north of Griffin Street is the current use. Industrial is the current zoning. So, that may be of some interest when you wordsmith that.
Well, thank you very much for that. Sandra, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions of us? Just kidding, sorry. Okay. Should we just move into the next presentation? Caleb, you're on.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, commissioners and councilmember. Thank you so much for having us up here today. It was a beautiful, sunshiny day up here in Canyon. My only connection to Canyon before this project, before coming down a handful of times for this project, was back in 2000. My brother was a rafting guide, and then his, who ended up being my sister-in-law, was an intern at the newspaper here. But I'm happy to be back. It's a nice little town. So, my project is calibrating the zoning for the commercial areas of Canyon City. And so, a little bit about me. My name's Caleb Jackson. I graduated from University of Northern Colorado with a degree in geography. Then I worked for the city of Greeley in the planning division there, and just recently began working at the city of Loveland in the planning division. And I'll graduate in May, God willing, with a dual masters of public administration as well as urban and regional planning. And so, as that, with me pursuing my graduate studies, I just want to set the stage a little bit, talk about the project, my background research, and my methodology for tackling this project. And so, this is a capstone project. And so, in our program, essentially, we do a capstone project in lieu of a traditional thesis. And so, this project is going to fulfill those degree requirements for me. The project impetus for this, as Deana's mentioned, is the US-50 corridor plan that was adopted by Canyon City. And essentially, this project is looking at the vision set out in that plan and throwing out ideas of ways to implement that framework so that way, that vision can be realized. And so, along with that, some of the objectives and deliverables I'm going to be providing are code language, clear standards, and illustrations to go along with that code language. And this is, again, just to see that vision set out by the city realized. And so, in my background research, I looked at some sources about how do planners and communities update their development codes? And so, I looked at research from the American Planning Association. That's the professional organization for planners in the U.S. And got some ideas about, and best practices about how codes are updated and the important pieces to have in them. I also looked at some resources from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to get an idea of the business sector and developers' needs and what they are looking for in development codes. So, we can take that into account because we can plan all day, but they're the ones that are building things. And so, we need to meet their needs, too. I also talked to Patrick here just to get an idea of the basic technical procedures of how code is amended and adopted in this particular community. And then, I also talked with Don Elliott of Clarion Associates. He's a subject matter expert on this. He's worked on updating codes all across the country. He's written a book about best practices about how to do so. And then, of course, looked into the US-50 corridor plan and to really understand the vision of Canyon City as best as I could, not being a resident myself. And so, here's a map from that corridor plan that breaks the US-50 corridor into several character areas, one being the downtown district, which stretches from generally First Street to Sixteenth, and the East Canyon District from Sixteenth to about, I think it's called Four Mile Creek, and then the gateway district going east of that and on the west side of town beyond the ridge. So, my methodology, after looking at all of that background research about how people update codes, first, I wanted to really understand the vision for the commercial areas, and as such, studied the US-50 corridor plan and met with staff here in Canyon City. Then I evaluated existing conditions by reviewing the existing land use code that's adopted here in Canyon City, and then visited sites around town that kind of showed both desirable and undesirable characteristics when evaluated against the vision from the plan. Then I explored alternatives, studying comparable communities and to see how they handle their commercial zoning, to try to understand some strategies that could potentially be borrowed and reworked and used in Canyon City, as well as looking at some of the form-based code strategies from the Library of Codes from the Form-Based Code Institute. And from all that, understanding the vision, the existing conditions, getting ideas of alternatives of how other communities are handling this, creating some recommendations, and specific code standards with illustrations, and proposed, and potential initial maybe zoning boundaries to go along with it, as well as some next steps to look at as a community that are beyond the scope of my particular project. And so, moving into preliminary findings, we have our existing conditions. And so, the way that I broke this down was by geography. I'm a spatial thinker, being a geographer. And so, starting with downtown, the vision that was gleaned from the existing literature is that the vision for downtown is as a vibrant place where people can live, people can shop, people can work, people can dine, people can be entertained. And with that, the desire for increased land use flexibility in downtown to allow those uses to ensure the continued vibrancy of this special place. And another part of that place is ensuring that there is a consistent and compatible urban form, that we don't see something come into the downtown area that sticks out like a sore thumb and becomes, you know, that undesirable place that takes away from the essence of what you have here in Canyon City downtown. And with that, a preservation of the character. And so, with downtown today, it has a significant historic core, which is something to really be proud of. And, but on the periphery of the historic core, there is an increased auto-oriented nature where you start to see the drive-throughs, restaurants, banks, as well as some gas stations and the like. And so, some barriers to seeing the vision realized are overly restrictive with land use in the current code. Certain uses aren't permitted by right, and so should potentially look into that, as well as untailored dimensional standards. So, in Canyon City, currently, you just have two commercial zoning districts, one being CB and one being C. So, CB is the downtown, I think I've got those right, yeah, is the downtown. And your minimum lot size there is 5280 square feet, which works well in the downtown when your traditional lots from the original plat are 44 by 120. That makes sense. But we have that same standard in the general C district, which is applied throughout the rest of Canyon City beyond the downtown core. And so, tailoring dimensional standards is of importance, as well as, another thing with that is height is oftentimes 100 feet in these commercial districts, which is maybe not appropriate for all areas of Canyon City. And then, there's also found to be a lack of preservation mechanisms in the code. There's a brief mention in the code of this historic overlay district in downtown, in the core. But there's no standards that go along with that district to preserve the character that the community cherishes. So, moving on to East Canyon, existing conditions there. This area, again, from about Sixteenth to about Four Mile Creek, is thought to be more of a transitionary in form to provide a logical and incremental transition from the form of downtown, the urban form of downtown, and the way sites are laid out and how big buildings are, to the more gateway form on the periphery of town. It's still intended or thought to be envisioned as mixed-use and accommodating some mid-size retail. And mixed-use, although being more commercial in nature than downtown. So, today, in East Canyon, you'll find a lot of large setbacks on the front of properties with a lot of parking, you know, from asphalt from property line to property line, and not really guided or curbed in those setbacks. And then, you also have a lot of small lots along this corridor, just one-off structures that have developed, that are relatively small. And some barriers in this part of Canyon are, again, untailored dimensional standards. Having just those two commercial zoning districts, they just are not tailored enough to provide the framework for the vision in East Canyon to be realized. And then, also inadequate design standards. Some of the polling that Deana had shared with us mentioned that residents in Canyon want an improved appearance and aesthetic quality to the built environment in this community. And so, that's lacking in the East Canyon District. And so, moving on to the peripheries at the gateways, the vision that came out from the plan there is more of a two-story maximum height in these areas and including access for people coming off of the highway, US-50, but also accommodating people walking and cycling to the site. And continue to work on design in this area to really make a positive image and a gateway that the people of Canyon can be proud of. And the gateway today, it features a lot of big-box retailers and hotels with the prototypical corporate design that you'll see across America. And some of the barriers in here, again, repeating myself, but is these untailored dimensional standards and lack of landscaping and design standards, and maybe, I've heard, lighting standards as well. And so, in exploring alternatives, looked at a few case studies from around Colorado, and the ones that stuck out to me the most were Salida, Buna Vista, and Glenwood Springs, just looking at how they handle commercial zoning in their communities because they share a lot of similarities as communities with Canyon City. They have, you know, significant historic downtown cores. They have these corridors with these small commercial lots like you see in East Canyon. And then, they have the big-box retailers that serve those regional needs and community needs and tourism needs on the periphery of their towns as well. And so, in Salida, they have two commercial zones and one mixed-use zone. What's special about them is they have four overlay districts. And for being not that large of a city, I thought that was pretty impressive. Two of them are historic to preserve the historic form and character of their downtown, as well as two corridor overlay districts. And then, in Buna Vista, this one was just adopted a few weeks ago in March, and they have just one commercial zone and three mixed-use zones. And all of these zones are intended to create a compact and pedestrian-friendly urban form. And then, in Glenwood Springs, they have four commercial zones and one residential transitional zone, which is essentially a zone they apply in areas where there's existing single-family homes that are maybe converted either partially or in full to an office use or an art gallery, some low-intensity commercial use. And what they have there that's special also is landmark and historic designation abilities, again, to preserve some of the places that they find the need to. So, moving on to my draft recommendations, where we're at with the project, the overarching theme is the desire for this user-friendly code. And so, this will entail replacing long lists with easily navigatable charts, clarifying code language by creating specific standards. Codes are notorious for being vague, which makes it more interpretable and potentially harder for developers to work with. And so, by creating specific standards to meet the code intent, you can resolve some of those issues. And then, also illustrations for some of the more complex portions of the code would help visualize the standards. And so, what I've looked at is the potential for a downtown mixed-use zone, transitioning that existing CB zone to this downtown mixed-use zone that would stretch potentially from First Street all the way to Sixteenth Street. And the reason for that is in the US-50 corridor plan, it envisions that roundabout, I think it's at Fifteenth Street, being this great entryway to downtown Canyon. And so, enveloping that intersection, just making a really clear statement that, "Welcome, you're here in downtown Canyon." And so, zoning the greater downtown area to this zone district. And allowing flexibility, though, in terms of uses, to ensure that we allow uses that allow people to be here and spend money here and work here. And then, ensuring an attractive and cohesive downtown form, you know, creating the framework so that way, you don't have something that comes in that just doesn't fit with the downtown character. And then, ensuring complementary design downtown as well. And another portion of this that I didn't detail much is the downtown historic district. Like I said, it has a boundary today, but it has no standards. And so, potentially looking at standards there that protect that character of that downtown core. That would be a strategy that could be used to do that. And then, moving down into what's termed currently the corridor mixed-use. So, zoning these eastern corridor areas of Canyon to this corridor mixed-use zone that accommodates commercial development on these small lots along US-50, allowing for a range of uses, but typically more commercial than downtown, and setting parameters for the steady transition of height and setbacks out of downtown and to the periphery of the community. And then, it's also another recommendation here to establish specific standards for attractive site and building design in this zone. And then, moving out to the gateway mixed-use area, proposing to look at zoning the periphery areas along US-50 to this gateway mixed-use, which is intended for more of those larger commercial developments that accommodate those. commercial developments that accommodate those regional commercial uses and the tourism needs. And in these areas, it's particularly important, again, to ensure the easy access via all modes of transportation and encouraging an interactive design that residents can be proud of. And so in the next steps, I'm going to be looking at refining these general recommendations that I presented to you. So that way I can then create specific standards and the code language and illustrations and additional direction outside the scope of this project and compiling it in a final report for staff. And so essentially throwing something at the wall, what I saw, the vision of Canyon City, and a framework that would see that realized, and throwing it at the wall and seeing what sticks and what needs to be changed. Because certainly what I propose today is not going to be what's adopted, but it's at least something to get the conversation started and get this moving along so that way Canyon City can provide the framework and become what it would like to be. And thank you. I'll accept any questions at this time.
Thank you, Caleb. All right, we'll do the, you start from that side.
What?
Start from that side. Okay, we'll start from that side. Councilmember Hamrick.
Thank you. The, just a couple of questions, I think that was to help me understand. And I do have some edits for you that I'll provide after. But I'm looking on page 11, and we're talking about the transition Central District, Business District Zone to the downtown mixed-use. And under 23C, it says, ensure an attractive and cohesive downtown urban form. And the next sentence following, it says, adjust maximum height to a base of five stories in greater downtown, only allowing greater height based on context. What does that mean? Based on what context?
Yeah, so one thing that a lot of communities have is some infill standards, and so the potential for that. And so that allows flexibility in the code, which developers oftentimes like to see and the business community likes to see. And so that would potentially allow, some communities use it so that way if both of your neighbors are at five stories already, that you would be allowed to go maybe one and a half times that height to continue allowing the code to be adaptable as Canyon City grows.
I see, yeah. So it'd be a variance to a strict limit, essentially.
Right, but it'd be an administrative way to do so.
Yes, gotcha, great. And then in that same paragraph C, it says, encourage the use of on-street parking and discourage the over-provision of parking lots. Do we have any over-provision of parking lots?
So I've not done a parking analysis. Another one of our Capstone students is doing a parking analysis in Salida. But, yeah, base, people would need to do a parking analysis to really find if there's an over-provision right now. But it's important in downtowns to maintain that character and that cohesive urban form. And all too often, I know back home in Greeley, these parking lots will come in and they'll just pave down these parts that used to be contributing structures, and it kind of just destroys the cohesiveness of downtown. And so it's something to just be aware of.
I understand. What the, and I lived in Grand Junction for a number of years, and what they did in their downtown, in the area that they wanted pedestrians, they essentially had businesses on each side of their main street, then behind the businesses were parking lots, big parking lots, that provided the pedestrians then to go up and down the streets, which was a nice compromise. Because if you want people to go there and walk around, they got to park somewhere.
Absolutely, yeah. And in Greeley, they're looking at putting in a parking structure to accommodate that in a different way. And Grand Junction's downtown is neat, too, with their meandering kind of main street. It's really a nice place.
It's nice. They did a lot of good work there. They have kind of bumpouts there, don't they?
Yeah, and a lot of art. Or the arts, or the bumpouts controversial.
The, and the other question I have on the corridor mixed-use, you know, there's a proposal essentially by CDOT, and there's going to be a meeting here, I think it's tomorrow night, where they present a conceptual plan to do away with the frontage road on the north side of Highway 50. And have you, are you aware of that, and have you, you know, considered that in what you've got here?
Right, so, yeah, that was actually proposed in the US-50 corridor plan. And so, and that's what the bulk of that plan was, was these improvements along US-50. And so, yeah, I think that's a really important piece, and it's definitely something that was considered and will be continued to be considered as specific recommendations come along.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Ladoo.
Yeah, I guess one question, the historic, downtown historic boundary, is that from an existing source, or is that something you produced?
Yeah, so that is an existing boundary that I got from the city's GIS. And then also, I think it also aligns with the historic, the national historic designation that Canyon City has for its downtown core.
Okay. And then the ground floor residential in the downtown mixed-use, can you, I just saw the setbacks, but can you quickly go through how that would work if it has been set? Because that is sort of a flashpoint currently.
Yeah. So in the US-50 corridor plan, it envisioned allowing certain residential uses, duplexes, down homes, condos, and the like, as a use by right in downtown to encourage people to continue to live in the core. And so, and it envisioned additional setbacks for those. Based on the nature of residential uses, you'll want to be setback more than zero feet all the way up to the property line, just based on the nature of use, to give some realm of privacy as a transition from the public realm to the private realm. And what I envision, what I think I'm going to end up proposing in my general recommendations, would be to not permit those types of uses within the historic core. And so maintaining the ground floor retail commercial uses in that core district.
Okay, which would match the historic district boundary that's already somewhat established.
That's right.
Okay, perfect. That's all I have.
Commissioner Harmon.
I don't have much to add or to ask. I invite you to our public hearings when we start talking about this to the community. You're proposing some pretty significant changes right downtown. Just changing the name of the zone is a pretty significant change right downtown. How have other communities, very open-ended question, how have other communities handled that? I mean, you said, was it Salida, Buna Vista that just changed over?
That's right, and so...
Was it a major change on their part, or was it a...
Yeah, so they changed from traditional codes to unified development code that's much more form-based and much more similar to what, the way I'm leaning myself and what I saw envisioned in the US-50 plan. And so they did, I believe, have to hire a consultant to help facilitate those community discussions and, you know, throw things and see what sticks.
That's why we hired Dina.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's definitely really important to get the community input because in the end, I mean, these are the ones, these are the people that live here, and they want to see that they've been listened to and that their, you know, their concerns are taken into account. So, yeah, that's really...
Have you, have you gone through public hearings like this? And have you taken that into consideration when you, did it affect your thinking if you did?
So personally, I've not had to do public hearings for a major code change. Where I'm working right now, Loveland, is working on updating their code in a big way. And so they've also hired consultants to really facilitate that process properly.
That's, it's an interesting thought. Just an interesting thought, but thank you, I appreciate your work.
Thanks. Commissioner Clark.
I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Commissioner Schirato.
I do not have any questions either. Thank you, though.
Well, I'm going to take all their questions.
Everyone else wants to go home.
I just got, a couple of quick ones. It's mostly on page nine, you talked about the Historic Preservation Committee and then the Landmark and Historic Designations. How are we going to interweave the historic codes with the new codes? How are we going to make sure that we're not infringing upon those things that are already there? Because if you designate something as a historic site, it's very hard to make any kind of modern changes with those things.
Yeah, you're right. And they can, and updating those buildings can be quite costly as well. I know in Greeley that, you know, we have a property that's historically designated on the city register, and, you know, it's just too expensive for people to be able to bring it back, you know? And so that's really something that people need to be aware of. And so I appreciate you raising that issue about how that's interwoven and that we continue to see people use these properties.
So if we change these codes, is that going to affect the property owners, obviously? Will they, I don't say they'd be fined if they don't upgrade, will they be grandfathered in, which kind of leads us back to where we were?
So nobody under code would be required to upgrade anything. It'd be essentially all optional, right? You aren't required to make improvements to your property, except, you know, I do need to look into that landmark designation a little more in Glenwood about how they handle that. But that's typically to protect what's existing rather than require something new.
There was an issue at Territorial Prison, which was built in 1871. It was about 10 years ago that they wanted to upgrade with smoke alarms and fire depressions and all these other things, you know, flashing lights and all that. And they had a hard time, even though it was a safety issue, because it was designated as a historical site, they had to jump through hoops to try to get that done. So I'm just wondering if all these other buildings that are 1890 and 1900, if we're going to have the same issues with those.
Right.
One other question is basically to both of y'all, and it's kind of an opinionated question. Assuming that you've got these plans and all these things go through that you want and you want, would you come and live here?
So, I mean, one thing that is to consider is that zoning is just setting up the framework.
Right.
And so setting up the framework for what you want isn't going to see it realized overnight. And so, I mean, even when you propose riverfront districts, the development might not come. Your question about coming to live here, I love these sizes of communities, and it's not too big for me, it's not too small for me, it fits just right. But one thing that, for me as a millennial, I'm interested a lot in those downtown vibrant places. And so seeing the bones of this downtown in Canyon City is really pretty attractive. And so, yeah, I would never, you know, if you get some funding, create another planet position, maybe I'll be here in a few years.
That's what I was trying to say, you know, what are the pros and cons of living here? So if we can get more people with the vibrant ideas that you have, it's still a great place. I love living here. So I'm just wondering what the opinions are from outsiders, but basically that's it.
For me, I'm a baby boomer. I'm a little bit older than him. And I think with the development, the redevelopment downtown and everything, that's going to add tremendous vibrancy to your downtown. But what I also like about this area is you have a lot of outdoor, I like the outdoors. So you have a lot to offer as far as the outdoor recreation environment also. And that's, to me, that's very attractive in addition to having choices and options with the vibrancy that's envisioned for downtown. So, yeah, I would.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate both your plans. Thank you. And I have no questions. Thank you for your presentation.
All right, great job. And again, thank you very much for all the work and research you've done. It's much appreciated. And there's more to come, I'm guessing, or is this it for us?
That's it for me and Sandy. It's the last time, first and last time we'll see you, but I can assure you that Dina and Patrick, you'll see them working on these a little more.
Okay, awesome. Dina, did you want to come back up and wrap anything up for us on this discussion items?
Just very briefly, so the timeframe is all of the additional work that Sandy and Caleb have mentioned that they're going to be doing will occur in the next two-ish weeks. So staff will be getting their final report and final recommendations here within the next two weeks or so. So I think, as I reported and updated last week at council, the current plan is to then focus on the riverfront district creation work first from a staff standpoint, and then the commercial district work would begin after that. And that piece, you know, definitely needs budgeting considerations. You know, the question remains whether we will still need some additional assistance on the riverfront piece to create the form base and the graphics and the illustrations that I really would like to see in the code, so.
All right, thank you. Thanks again. We'll move on. You're welcome to stay, but you probably have to drive somewhere, I'm guessing, right?
We'll stay for these follow-up comments.
Oh, right, right, okay, so hang out. Thank you. All right, let's move on. Item number five, we have announcements. Joint Planning Commission City Council Meeting, May 23 at 5:00 PM.
And that will be here in this, in this room. The other announcement has to do with the fact that since we do have some new planning commission members, we would like to schedule a planning commissioner training for the new members. I am attempting to get a date set for that. Since we have a joint meeting with council on the 23rd, it's going to be impractical to hold the training that night, which pushes us into June. And I would rather not wait all the way until June 27th for that, since that's only a week before the Fourth of July holiday. So I'm seeing if I can arrange a room for us to use here in City Hall for the 13th of June, Wednesday, the 13th, which would be an off Wednesday night. I'll see if I can find something, and I will send out a follow-up message as plans firm up on that.
Okay, so just include all of us, and even if you're not new to the commission, you're welcome to go, correct? I think I did it a couple of years ago. And then, and then this council, city council meeting, that's scheduled, that's set. Does anyone here have any conflicts with that date and time?
We took a poll, and of course Commissioner Smith was not part of the planning commission at the time we took the poll, but it was unanimous that the 23rd worked for everyone.
Okay, fantastic. Any other announcements for the good of the order? We all good? Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.